You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 22 meeting for the LaPorte County Council Budget Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Good evening. I'd like to reopen the or continue the budget workshops that we've been working through the last several weeks. This evening, my intention is to finalize the auditors, surveyors, building maintenance, board of commissioners, and I believe we have the council in here? Yes, and the council twos and threes at a minimum, as well as having a discussion about general discussion regarding 100 accounts.
Motion to approve.
Wasn't looking for a motion, but I appreciate it.
Novak. Get this over quick.
Exactly. So let's start with at the top with the auditors. Gentlemen, if you look at twos and threes, you'll see very similar numbers to what we approved last year. Minor adjustment to office supplies from 10,500 to 12,000. Looks like an increase in dues.
Printing is $4 and dues is up a little bit more, too.
Yes. Thoughts? Motions? Yes, Mr. Novak, give you to get your mic, sir.
The, yes, thank you.
The office supplies? Is that?
It encompasses, we have lots of forms that we make copies of or that we send out to printer.
It's not something you could use that supplemental account that you got all that money in for?
We're using that supplemental for quite a bit. If you'll see that later's agenda, we are hitting that hard and we, you know, that's not going to keep growing as fast as we did this year. And the supplemental account is behind this one? Or should have been like, yeah, it is. The next page is that auditors.
Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion. It's not gonna make him happy, but I'm gonna leave it at the 10,500 for office supplies. Motion as presented except for office supplies.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Yagelski. Just as a question, is this for all the twos, threes, and fours as presented minus the office supplies? Is that correct? Okay. Mr. Kelly, you just your damn mic as if you had something?
That was exactly what I was gonna clarify. That was two, three, and four hundred.
Okay. Mr. Yagelski.
Can you refresh my memory, please, on this 40122?
It's a bond payment. The courthouse, Michigan City courthouse.
I guess so would be a 400 account then, couldn't it?
All that cap, that's for the million two for 2026?
Yes, it's off of their, off of the amortization schedule.
So, question, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Yagelski.
We have a million five five that's in the account now. We could take that out for the million two and equal that out, and then we had talked about putting some of the money back into the maintenance with the remainder amount. So we have million five.
Mr. Yagelski, if I can interrupt, you're talking about something else. This payment comes from our general fund.
I understand. So I'm, I'm.
But you're talking about the, the money that's left over from the renovation fund, correct? Okay, this has nothing to do with that.
I understand that, but I want to use that money for this. I totally get it.
Okay, but I don't think that's, we don't have an attorney here, but I think that you need to wait to talk about that until after the vote is taken, I think.
I don't think so, but I'm, I'm gonna beg to differ.
So what, we can make modifications between now till the final budget is approved. So do we want to approve it as is for now and then reconsider it?
Yeah, if you don't mind, because I, I think at that point, there's no reason why we can't transfer with our own funds and that we cover for next year's amount. They don't agree, I don't care. It's just something that we can do. And then to take the remainder amount.
That's camera on.
Different meter, no?
No, go ahead.
We take the remainder amount that we talked about to the maintenance so we could finish up with the funding of the maintenance.
Yeah. No, I like the strategies, just whether or not we can do it. I see that Mr. DiMartino is on.
Mark, don't hate on me. I think that money needs to go back in Rainy Day, and then you need to appropriate it back into what you want to use it for.
Oh, I don't, yeah, no, it's the hate. I just, I'm not disagreeing with you. So we walk around it a little bit. We're still gonna do the same thing.
Correct.
So, so how, how we move the money around is irrelevant to me. I, I'm not disagreeing with you. So, or even Ms. Winski, I'm just trying to say, we'll move it around, but it's still gonna do the same thing.
So how about a friendly amendment to where we consider twos and threes and figure out fours once we've done the amendment?
Or we just amend it?
You're, you're talking about two different things. You're voting on the auditor's budget with the 1.2 payment, but you're also talking about the 1.5 that was left over from the Michigan City Renovation Fund, which I agree with, Mark, that we can use it for building maintenance, but I think that you're just out of sequence when you're voting on this.
Ms. Winski, I know what you're saying, but I don't think I am. I think that however we.
Let me make a suggestion.
It's a checkerboard. However we move the checkerboard around, the conclusion at the end of it is gonna be.
Okay, but let me make a suggestion, that you talk about this when we talk about building maintenance.
I think we just already talked, well, we are doing both because there's.
Right, but you're, you made a motion to.
I didn't make no motion. I, I have, I have not made a motion.
Seconded the motion.
Yep, but now we're talking, but now there's a question on it, and I have a question. So my 400 count is the question. Yes, Mike, please.
If I may, we are reminded that we are subject to a 4% increase, and next year, things start changing on us. So if we start pulling this out of our budget right now, when we have an opportunity to keep it in the budget, how are we gonna raise the 1.2 million dollars next year out of what increase is allowed for us?
I think that.
So, but you just, if you want to move it around for what money later on, we can certainly talk that out with the attorney and get that done, but I think you just leave things as is for the budgetary purposes this year.
I'm gonna debate you on the 4%, because of all the amount of money that we put back into the budget that we don't normally spend, and there was a lot of money, not talking about cuts, I'm talking about we put back into it.
Overtime and fuel.
We're gonna make up the four, we're gonna make up the 4%.
We're over, but we're also planning to pull EMS out and make a local income tax on EMS that's gonna raise the $6 million that we need to cover for EMS, and that's gonna bring the numbers that you've been increasing over into a local income tax now for the next two years. So I'm saying that even with the increases that you've put in so far this, the past couple of years, we're up there, and so I'm concerned that we're not playing a good level game. Use funds later on.
As I was watching this play the level game up till now, we've increased the 2026 budget immensely by all those numbers that we normally, normally would pay during the year. So I'm gonna either, it's, it's a shell game, and I'm, and I'm not willing to play the shell game.
I think you're gonna need this, that money for future expenses. That's not this.
If I budget you a million two for the year.
I don't get to use this. I get to just pay it.
I understand. If I budget you a million two, and I spend it right away instead of during the year, I'm doing the same thing. It's a shell game. I'm just trying to put that this will take care of that. We're gonna still have to try to find money. That has nothing to do with that. I still, we still have to find a way to write a $1,200 check.
Or 2,610.
If we just.
I'm just gonna play with you a little.
We have state case for the 400 accounts, and we can talk about the 400 accounts later, so that's okay.
Change the motion to it's twos and threes.
I'm okay with that.
Talk about two different things.
Amendment to twos and threes only.
You good with that?
Good with them. Good with the amendment? Good for the second. All right, so we have a motion and a second from Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Yagelski, to approve twos and threes as presented minus the office supplies being changed to 10,500 versus $12,000. All in favor of the motion as presented? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Thank you. All right, now we move to the auditors. What we have here, location 352, meaning the ineligible deductions. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Kessler. Just a question, is this covering what we, this is for the 200s only, correct? Your approval, your motion?
Correct.
This is for the auditor's ineligible deduction fund?
Correct. Unless there's any further questions, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
May.
Thank you. Surveyor in. Let's hold that over in case he does show up. Building maintenance. Okay, well. I don't, I understand. So that brings us to the Board of Commissioners.
See if he's on his way. Where we off to?
All right, so we are under the Commissioners. So we are looking at twos and, 200s and 300s.
Unless somebody's got an objection, we, I kind of thought at our last meeting that we talked about this, that we could have approved the twos and 300 accounts at that time, but we weren't quite sure what we were gonna do that night, so I'm not, unless somebody has something they want to tweak, I'm gonna approve the 200 and 300 accounts motion.
Motion by Mr. Novak to approve the 200s and 300s. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Second by Mr. Mullenhour and Mr. Pressle.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so for 200s and 300s, and I haven't had a chance to review these because I just got this packet for the amendments to the, our budget book, were the amounts for health insurance modified to reflect the expected amount in the contract for?
The answer is that there will have to be added another million dollars before we close this out. So it's going to have to be modified. We're not gonna leave it like it was done last year to me.
Okay. Would it make sense while we're trying to get numbers to put in a rough estimate that's closer to that if we know it's going up rather than use last year's number?
You gotta remember that the insurance is spread out all over, so we would have to modify it all over, so I would like to get that opportunity to do it then, but if you approve this, then I can give you that amended for all of them and let you know exactly.
And you're talking about the other departments that pay, have a special fund where they're paying a share of employees.
Whether it's a grant or whatever, and we do have, we also in the 1216 account that we just showed you, we were gonna pay for our share.
Okay, that's fair. That takes time to calculate.
I'll modify my motion so that it's minus the health insurance. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
That way we can put a number in there.
And I will also share that the Social Security, depending on, and Medicare, depending on what you decide later, if you decide today on general raises or whatever, that may affect those numbers, too. So just understand that, that we'll modify things, and you'll give me permission to modify those things, and we'll be great, we'll be fine.
The current estimate that's in here as it relates to Social Security, Medicare, all those withholdings, pensions, are those reflective of current salaries? Will that fully cover the cost of that?
I would say probably short, a couple hundred thousand dollars, because we were waiting to do the full calculation. We're short, we're short $830,000, but if we were fully employed throughout the whole year, that number would be much higher. Since we were not fully employed, you'll see later in tonight's meeting, it'd be 830 that we're asking for.
And I'm sorry, I'm doing this on the fly here, so.
No, it's all right. This hasn't really changed these numbers, so.
Did they, did they go up from last year's estimates? The numbers that are in here?
Some of the, no, I don't believe they have. Other than the insurance should have, but I don't, I can't, I can't square by it because we didn't know that it was a 10% increase until recently.
Payroll withholding.
Payroll withhold, we're making up part of the payroll withholding tonight, aren't we?
Yeah, but it's, yeah, it's not a large, so that's not a large amount when you look at it, the big perf, the big difference is perf in, in health insurance.
So, but that part that we're making up tonight is in next year's budget?
It is not in there yet. We're gonna, when you tell me if you're gonna give increases, we'll do it all at once, but right now, we would be short a couple hundred thousand dollars.
But that's all 100 account.
In the 100s, yes.
Okay, so we're not doing those tonight.
Yes, Mr. Yagelski.
I know we're not doing the 100 accounts, but just a question, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Granamos, so we, I know you put it out, did the Commissioners okay for us to, and the attorneys for the GIS Committee?
Yeah, we're working on that right now.
Okay, so I just mentioned that fact that before this is over, what we'd like to get does come out of different budgets for that GIS coordinator?
Okay.
Just as a side note.
All right, definitely keep that in mind when we go through the 100s. All right, so you made a motion, amendment to your motion, Mr. Mullenhour, are you good with it as being primary or second?
Okay. Yes, I would just conclude my discussion with saying that, I mean, I still have concerns that this is probably under budgeted. Their expenditures in the past have historically exceeded this. Figuring out how to right-size this sooner rather than later, I think, is an important task going forward. But I know that that's also balanced with, I don't think that we agree with some of those expenditures, so how do we make sure that those don't happen either?
We still got time to tweak it before.
Yeah, just not a lot of time.
I know. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the twos and threes for the Board of Commissioners? Signify by saying aye.
I see insurance. Aye.
All right, 6-1.
Did you nay?
Yes.
I want to make sure I'm consistent, too.
Now for this big old fat budget of the council.
All right. County Council. We are not asking for a lot of money.
Did we forget, did we forget about it? Why? Why is this coming up to me?
I thought we proved it.
We never proved it.
We usually fill it in.
Be increased.
Okay, all right. So besides professional services, we have our regular 100 accounts, so.
Why is this one going? Requested budget, 7800.
Have you take a look at the council budget in your book, because one of these numbers, just the 300, 301, 35, just does not seem right, because that's supposed to be the same salary as a council member, and so that's why it's bothering me with this, with that number, with these numbers that are here.
You wanna see the old book, or?
The book that you, the book that you have. I just don't think these numbers are correct on this page now that I'm looking at it.
We budgeted that. Why are you going to get that?
Yeah, shouldn't be.
Remind me. Who knows? Might be.
Which usually it is, but it's a thousand dollars more.
You're gonna make copies of that for everybody.
Of course.
I just don't know how those.
And why is this? Why is this back? And now it's going down to 400.
Gentlemen, I'm gonna revise the page that you have in front of you, because I just know that those numbers.
You know, on the 26 requested budget, on the 100s is not correct either.
As I'm looking at what we were, the file that was sent to us.
That one right?
That one looks right.
That's what he just pulled from my book.
Yeah. Professional service, yeah, that looks a lot better. Yeah.
That's the one you said he just pulled?
Yeah, it matches what we got. It's for cheap.
You can just give that to Justin. You got no due somewhere? Yeah. Okay. Want to pass it down?
All right. So now with the page we have in front of us. You look at it, office supplies is the same as was last year, dues is the same as last year, professional services is the same, so.
Yep, our finances.
Yep. Motion approved. Twos and threes?
Yeah.
All right. Motion approved twos and threes by Mr. Novak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler and Mr. Pressle. Any last minute discussion?
Real quick, do we need to leave the office supplies in? I mean, it's $150, but we haven't used it, and somebody wants a pencil, they're gonna come ask you for a pencil. I don't think it's coming, you're gonna.
If you'd like to take them out, then we can take them out and just use it from the auditors. You know, we don't care.
We've never, we haven't used it for the last two years.
Well, we've kind of taken it down. I think it was more than that years ago, but can we just leave it in there but zero it? Can we zero? Yeah.
Yeah, we can, if you want to remove the 150, but the dues, we do need dues.
Yeah, take the 150 out, but leave the dues, because I think, doesn't that cover the county dues, or is that?
We end up paying, we end up paying for it out of another fund for some of your dues. I don't remember what the 140 was for.
Should we zero the 142?
We used it in '24.
Pretty good job.
We did.
We expended it in '25.
So well, well.
Twenty-five expended.
Zero. We haven't done anything with it. So we have 140.
The previous year.
Right.
So.
Mr. Novak.
I think you asked, I think you asked us to take it out the last time.
Yeah, that's fine.
If somebody does AIC travel or something like that, where is that coming out of?
That comes from the elected officials.
Recording our travel?
Recorders.
Okay.
Well, only if it's a state called conference.
What's that? Only if it's for an AIC conference, yes.
Yeah.
State called conference, yeah.
Leave the 140.
Otherwise, it would come out of the Commission.
Leave the 140 in there, take out the office supplies, zero that out. That's my amendment.
All right, so amendment, you good with it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so motion amended to reduce the office supplies to zero, keep dues and professional services the same. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
You? All right. Building maintenance?
You want to go to?
Surveyor? If you would.
I think he wants to be in the regular meeting, so we'll see him for later.
Is he?
Surveyor? I don't care with it.
He needs to come back.
Yeah, just to keep him moving in case he's going to. So how far off is he from 2020?
Is that him or her?
Her.
All right.
Where we at?
All right, so let's, Justin, heard anything from Surveyor? So let's review it quickly. So if we look here, we have an increase in office supplies by $178, and then we get into mileage, employee education, mobile phones, for a total of a
Yes, I will for the next.
Roughly $2,000 increase.
Motion to approve as at the 2025 rates.
I believe, I believe it's $50 a month, not, we, we'd put that number in before we knew that it was $50 a month, so that would be more like 600.
So my motion to approve is at the 2025 approved plus the $600 for the phone for the surveyor.
And so you're, you're removing his request for mileage and employee education and training?
But he took out gas, oil, and everything else. He took out $1,700, that's for nothing there. So I'm giving him the 1,750 there. So there's money in there, so he's just gonna have to.
The only thing is that mileage is a 300 and gas, fuel, and oil is 200 account for the auditor's office sake. Does it make a difference?
It can transfer.
Not without council approval, though.
He still has his perpetuation fund, so if he needs shortfall on anything, he can, and there are funds there, so. I don't believe you have a second yet.
I do not have a second. So have a motion to approve twos and threes from Mr. Novak. Do I have a second? Motion approved twos and threes to 2025 budget. Second by Mr. Pressle. Mr. Auditor?
Clarity on the blueprinting, photography and blueprinting, did you include, keep that in? Because I know during the discussion, there was no need for it, so, in the earlier meetings. It doesn't matter, you know, you just give him, he can move it someplace else if need be. He can transfer if he needs to.
Just for clarity, can we do a rundown of all these? Because there were a lot of changes and edits made along the way, just so that way we have a clean record of what exactly the amount for each line item.
Run from, starting with 20001, increase from 322 to 500.
So my motion's to hold that at 322.
Right, I'm just.
Right, I agree, I agree.
Yep. So 2025 for gas, fuel, and oil was 1,750, now is zero, as he's submitted. Photography and blueprinting was 610, now is zero. Dues remains at 100. Mileage increased from 0 to 1,500. Employee education and training previously wasn't funded, now at 1,800. And mobile phone previously was unfunded, now is at 1,000. If we go back to 2025, grand total will be, including 100s, 181, 858. What he's asking for today is 183, 977.
So I'm gonna amend my motion to keep it totally at the 2025, and I'm gonna take the phone out of there, because the photography and blueprints is $610. If we leave that in there, if we approve the 2025 money, he's gonna have money in there to cover his phone, right? It's in the 300 account to transfer it.
Yep.
Right?
Or you want me to just, or do you just want me to move it to 610?
You know, I hate to move things around on somebody that's not here. I'm just trying to.
Given this was his request, I think he'd be comfortable with, with moving it from the 610 from blue, photography and blueprinting down to mobile phone. It'll also make it easier for us to keep track of in next year's budget then.
You want to move the 610, all of it?
Yep.
Just in case there's tax or something, that's fine.
So motion by Mr. Novak. And I'm gonna call that 610 amendment. You good with the amendment?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Mr. Novak?
And I just want to, just want to state that if, for some reason, he comes in and he needs something, we still got some time to tweak something. So this isn't a shoving it down, you know, it's just trying to get the process moving forward.
Yep, I agree.
That's all.
Right. All in favor of approving to the 2025 budget with the suggested changes? All signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
And that leaves us.
About six minutes.
Six minutes. Thank you. Building maintenance, let's quick review what we've got here, just so we're prepared. Please try not to rapid fire when Angie gets here. Looking through twos and threes.
Are there any changes? I didn't think there was, but. Radio repair was zeroed out?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.?
If I remember correctly, there was conversation at the first meeting about the electric being, you felt that you should move some money away from it.
Yes.
However, with the increases that NIPSCO has put in, it comes right back to the 1.3. So.
But it still separates for what?
Yeah, because I believe it was $200,000 if my memory serves me correctly. And I don't, if I need to go get a book, I'll go back to the.
Oh, I have my notes here, just one moment.
My spreadsheet has us having previously discussed it at 1.1.
Yeah, to move it to 1.1, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Because the 1.1 included the 15% increase for NIPSCO, but did not, but we also have REMC and/or INM bills that did not have an increase.
I don't believe it had the increase. I think we looked at the current rates bill, so that's all I can say. That's all, that's all I recall.
Understood. Is, I'm looking here, that is correct, the 1.1, and that was all that we had changed.
Did janitorial supplies change?
Janitorial, yeah, so it went to zero.
Hmm?
Well.
It went to zero in the 300s, and it went to 132 in the 200s.
Making any changes? It's moved over. Janitorial supplies. Yeah.
Drop down by 40,000.
That was what was requested.
Requested.
Expended.
That was what was budgeted. Could you say which account numbers that those, made those changes on? Because I want to make sure I get it right for you.
From, from my records from before, it looks like 42,600 shifted from 3111 to janitorial services over to 20028 janitorial supplies, making that 132,000 even. It would seem it wasn't an increase, it was just a.
It was just, it was a shift so that it's easy to track, to be more consistent. Because the items are not, were not services in the other, they were just supplies from the 300. That's typically the difference.
We're already talking about you.
Thanks. Hi.
Thanks for coming.
Sorry, it's a little late.
You're good. It's been a day.
Doesn't make sense why this.
A bit. It's been a weekend.
Yes. All right, so we're reviewing twos and threes as we were before. We were, just recently we're discussing the reduction we made to electrical. We talked about in July already. And then the adjustments that we made to janitorial services and janitorial supplies.
Is there a copy of this up there for her to look at?
I have what Joey gave me.
Perfect, okay. I think there's been a lot of conversation about the building maintenance budget being funded too low, given the amount of work that needs to be done. What would you propose we do? What do you think it needs to be? We might not say yes, but I'd love to hear what you think it should be in order to cover our, our expected bare minimum maintenance needs.
Expected is a little difficult when we run into emergencies from issues that haven't been taken care of that turn into craziness, basically. There's really no way to tell what we're looking at at that. I can get a rundown for you guys on projects that I know are going to have to happen that we haven't done this year. Again, the point we're at is, you're handed something that was kind of chaotic, and now you're running into emergencies with pretty much everything that should have been fixed and wasn't. There was money spent out of the budget this year from last year, bills. We're finding bills from January, February that weren't paid that we're paying now. At this point, where I'm at, we haven't had a chance to see where this budget goes. I don't have an answer for you. I'm not going to lie. I don't have an answer for you. We were left with something that wasn't passed down like it should have been.
Sorry. If you take some of these things like air handlers account, I know that that's going to fall apart the first month compared to what we have right now that we've got issues on.
Yep.
Mr. Novak or Mr. Pressley? Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Yeah. Air handlers and stuff like that, that, that's going to be, this amount that we're requesting is not even a drop in the bucket.
Right.
Or Mr. DiMartino, if you're still on that conversation.
He's there.
Mr. DiMartino?
Yes, sir.
So I was mentioning some of the accounts that, one of the things that you talked, you came in front of us last month, air handlers repair, 16,000 is not going to be enough. Coming close for that particular subject matter. The accounts that you see, did you, did you have a feeling for that account at all or no?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I can tell you right now, there are three air handlers that I know need attention in the jail.
That's what I'm talking about.
I don't have quotes on those yet. I have been trying to get those, looking at different things. I don't have quotes on those. I could probably tell you it's going to exceed that on the three that we're looking at.
Oh, 100%, yeah.
Yes.
Ball over that with three of them.
I mean, if you're, if you're actually looking for that stuff, it's also, do you have it two places? A lot of stuff you have here in two places, I'm trying to understand it, but there's, some of them are 200, some of them are 300s. But why? I'm just curious.
That's a good question.
Some are contracts, some are.
So your air handlers is a contract on a 200 or 300, or you have an idea? There's two different line items?
Somebody outside fixing it.
Yes, somebody outside's fixing it.
So that would be a 200 account if then the outside is doing it?
300.
300, okay, so we would be doing the 200, okay.
Parts would be 200.
Okay.
If we're doing the work ourselves.
I would like to see if your suggestion is that you could take the HVAC technicians, that's out anyway of the 100 account, and transfer into the repair air handlers?
Into the 300, the outside service, or?
Pick, pick one you're, pick, or split it, okay. Doesn't matter at this point. She can always come back if she has to.
Yeah.
It's just a suggestion. Why do you, for, for trash removal, you have a 2 and 300 account, why, why would, why would we have a 200 account for trash removal?
I know we have a contract with trash removal.
That I understand.
I'm not going to lie, I have been so busy, I have not had time to like.
No, no, we're just. The requested amount is not, there is no requested amount for 200s for trash removal. It's blank.
It looks like it was there previously.
Yeah, I think it got transitioned to 300s.
Correct.
So, says 354 seem reasonable for trash removal?
Well, if you look in your packet for tonight, there's 7,328.84 for trash removal invoices that are part of the 360 that is being requested tonight, so. Okay. So apparently not.
But is that in the right account, 200?
That should be a 300 account.
That's why I'm saying, it's a 200 account.
Some of your accounts like pest control, those are all ground maintenance.
Yes.
Those are all solid numbers. So you're, you're okay with some of these numbers?
Yes.
There's trash removal in here. Got it.
Perhaps some of this is worth revisiting after we've had a chance to run new reports to see what year-to-date expenditures are, and then maybe you can forecast out what you expect for expenditures in the last quarter and see if these are budgeted at an appropriate level, like trash removal. See what we spent to date, see how much you think is going to be coming in, and then come up with a new number.
I can tell you trash removal, when they changed companies, they didn't account for what it was going to cost to pick up the other dumpsters, and I think that's where we're running into now. It wasn't accounted for the costs that they charged, and then the overage when they picked it up, because we were looking at that, I think, two weeks ago. So that was not accounted in the budget from the previous year, and that was kind of a last minute decision.
Angie, who's the one that changed it over?
The last director.
The rest. So even if they did change it over, that would be an expense for, that wouldn't be a budgeted amount?
Correct, it would have been an expense, but they used out of the trash removal budget, and then I do believe some of that was paid from this year's budget.
Agreed, but so in 2026, is that, what's a solid number for trash removal?
We're probably looking close to the 34.5, because I'm actually looking to change that, because we have a company that is going to be lower than what we have.
And if, if there's a cost that's involved later about having to remove dumpsters or whatever it is, that's just something you come back to the council with, so.
Right. But what we're looking at for budget now, if I'm doing this correct, that will be in the budget for the removal of these and the setup of the new ones.
Yeah, but I'm just referring to the last thing. That's not really a budget thing you said, because removing, that would just, it's just a cost involved, and you have to come back for that.
Sure we do.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Auditor.
Knowing that it would really be helpful to close this out tonight, seriously, I'm going to make a suggestion that you use the 30299 account repairs to building and come up with an estimate or, or major repairs in the 30130 account, and come up with some number that you would feel comfortable adding to this if that's what you want, whether it be a quarter of a million dollars, a half a million dollars. I mean, this has been an abnormal year of, of a lot of repairs, and you have to expect that some of that might continue. But right now, I think we're always running reactive and not proactive. And so, you know, it's now the committee, the members of that committee, if there's anything guidance that you might be able to suggest, because I know there's been listed in the past some other projects that were thought about doing and then got put off. So, you know, that's why I'm suggesting just throw a number, and then we'll move it as we need it. And, you know, if it increases the budget a little, it increases the budget.
I agree, because we need to get to a point where we have a, that's a real budget for me.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I know that we've met, you know, I know that Angie's met in my office several times trying to get things handled and understanding of it, so, you know, so I just need you to come up with a number.
I do, I do understand your statement about proactive reactive, but I, it's not that this is personal, but there's been a lot of question on the public because they've seen this maintenance thing. We had some inaccuracies in there. I would not put this all under an envelope that says it's proactive reactive. I think that we've, we didn't have no numbers, so we were told these are the numbers, and they weren't the numbers. I just want, I didn't mean.
No, I, I, I agree with you on that. I'm just trying to move forward, that's all.
I don't disagree, but my, but as you state that statement, it's got out to the public, the public has a misunderstanding of this proactive reactive comments are made.
Okay.
We had some bad administrative issues, and we had to fix those, so.
I'm going to, oh, go ahead.
In the interest of trying to, we still have more to cover, it sounds like, I'd make a motion to approve the requested amount in the 200s and 300s, with it being specifically 1.3 million in electric, given that Mr. Rosenbaum has indicated there, the increase in electric bills is likely to cause it to go to that level, and then add $100,000 into repairs to buildings, so on top of 110,000 there.
Just, just to move it forward tonight?
Yeah, just to move it forward tonight.
Make another adjustment.
It needs to be reevaluated in the future. And, and I would encourage the building maintenance department to prepare a capital projects plan, look at what you think it's going to cost, and then bring it back to the council as soon as possible, so that we can figure out how, prioritize it and figure out how it's to be paid for, given the fact that we've already have spent all of the money that was budgeted for building maintenance for nonutility and salary purposes this year, and then some. Clearly, 100,000 isn't going to cover it. I don't think it ever covered it, so it needs to be raised, but.
But just, I mean, I mean, I'm trying not to be argumental, but just stating that the 100 accounts were, we have 100,000 positive right now. We didn't spend all the 100,000. We didn't spend that. Remember I brought it up last meeting? We didn't, we didn't employ a lot of people this, this last.
Yeah.
Correct.
So just, just making sure that you understand that you made the statement, it's, no, the 100 account's been perfect because we actually have underfunded that thing because we haven't hired anybody.
Yeah, but we're only looking at twos and threes right now.
He's approving twos and threes, so we can pull that 100, that money out of there to make up that 100, so.
And may also, there was a remark to move the HVAC 66,285 down to the repairs to air handlers, so I just want to make sure if that's included in your motion or not, so.
In there? Yeah.
Because that was the recommendation before.
Do that, too, then. Into the 300 account?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second. So a motion by Mr. Keel for electric to be at 1.3 for, I understand, major repairs, 30130?
Repairs to buildings, 210,000.
Okay.
That's 30299 account.
Thank you.
And air handlers should be 79,290. You know, I pulled it from the right spot. No, that's not right. It's right, one second.
82,285.
Yeah, 82,285.
All right. Okay.
So this should be, get you closer to being funded, but it's not going to cover everything.
Correct.
But you need to be at our next meeting that we have to continue.
To the extent that you can get better estimates about what you think things are going to be, we'll try to keep incorporating those.
Okay.
So, all right, thank you for the detail. So we got a motion by Mr. Keel, second by Mr. Novak. Any other questions? All in, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that gets us through the specific budgets we had intended for tonight.
We very briefly, like, summarized what is left.
So.
Sort it out.
What's left to sort out, besides what we discussed with building maintenance, if there's anything else that we want to make last minute adjustments to, we also have general raises across the county, and then there are specific 100 accounts that we need to review in depth before we can have a final budget to submit to the state for approval. So there's been, I know we've all had some discussion individually, but my recommendation when it comes to general raises, and in speaking with the auditor, I believe we are looking at a number of 3%?
Yes. That was, that was what was commented to me, 3% number.
So with that number, what's, what impact does that look to have?
That impacts approximately 1.2 million dollars.
Should be 1.5. Should, if you look at the last seven years of 3%, it's 1.5, but.
If you want to go a higher number, I'll be happy to use a higher number.
This was given by people that have been in that chair along the way, I'm just saying. It's about 1% 5 million, 1.5. That's, that wasn't my number.
Okay.
It was the auditors in the past.
That's fine.
No, that would, that's going to.
You know what, it's a very safe, it's a very safe measure. Thank you.
That affects perf, and that affects everything else. Now, we also have to go through the individual presentations we have. So we have some individual salaries. We know we have a pretty lengthy justification in front of us regarding county highway that we need to get together and discuss, but that's going to take more than, you know, the 12 minutes that we have before our regular meeting.
So I, I just want to let you know the next set of dates that are available for this room, and if you want to continue the hearing, 10/6, you know, Monday the 6th and Tuesday the 7th are available. We might possibly even on the 29th, I didn't double check, but we might even possibly be able to get the 29th next Monday, if you wanted to move it up that quickly. I kind of need to have things finalized around that timeframe because I have to get a Form 3 in, and I can estimate the Form 3 high, and then we can always finalize the budget, but the, the budget hearing, I'd like that to, I would like to see if we can set that for either the 10th or for the, we can't do it the 13th because that's a holiday, so that would be Tuesday the 14th. And then two weeks later, we're coming back and we would be finalizing it. And the same thing goes with using that as the same public hearing for the local income tax for EMS.
I don't think this has been mentioned to the public before, so what is being proposed with a local income tax increase?
So in order to kind of contain our budget or to, not draw and play a shell game, it's just that our costs have been limited by the 4% or try to be limited 4% when inflation's been growing so high, and you, and, and you're a member, you're board, when I was on there too, we just kept trying to get to what are the real numbers. And in order to afford the real numbers, a local income tax of 1.2% for, and this is the tools that are given to us by the state, that would give us a little over $6 million, about $6.5 million, which would cover the EMS costs for the next, you know, for each year for the next few years, and also give us some funding for the EMS station, and possibly give or take on how expenses are, whether an ambulance can be also purchased out of those as well. The same time, it frees up some funding in the public safety lip, but not as much as people think, a maybe million dollars, of which we could also move either more sheriff salaries into that. So it also starts keeping the real estate tax. it also starts keeping the real estate tax, the portion, the real property tax portion, where we need it to be and shifting it as an income tax, which is what the state legislature has forced on us. I mean, the other concern is, you know, and we've discussed, it's been mentioned before, is looking at the total personnel and where you want to go with.
Staffing.
And it's, and it's very difficult to make those decisions as we know.
One of the questions that was brought up, or statement that was brought up, I, maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought 2026, we were okay with no ambulances this year because we bought the ambulances early in the COVID era type thing, which hadn't even been delivered yet. And also, we did a frame over instead of a purchase where, so maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken.
I think, I think you're right. I don't think there was an ambulance.
No, there's no, there's no projected ambulance in there. But I'm just saying, as we start looking and they start for 2027. So I'm looking two years now. I'm not just looking at one year.
I'm just, I'm just asking a question. That's also.
And I want to clarify my statement. So thank you for giving me that chance.
The other thing we have to consider is we've had the undue circumstances, right? We just had one get picked up by a servicer that is considering repairs by taking the box off and putting it under new casing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Same. But in this case, it wasn't due to wear, it's due to.
Yes, sir.
Incident. So.
I guess my question is, how are we going to be able to give the public a clear explanation about what the total 6.5 million is being spent towards? If 1.2 million is for a 3% raise, there's still another 5.3 million that remains that's for a bunch of things, but not a very clear set of things that is for. I mean, our general fund is around the ballpark of 50 million.
Okay. You're, okay. What did you just say so far? What, what do we have in there for the increases? What do you?
You said about 1.2 million for a 3% raise employees.
Well, we said, talk, make it 1.5 for a 3% raise using that number.
Okay.
Okay. You have health insurance that's going up over a million dollars. You have, you have payroll expenses, payroll that's also going to go up about a million dollars. So right now, you're at, excuse me, that's 3.5 already immediately with a four, without even thinking much on numbers. That's where that's going to cover. If you are planning to do a, to replace the Michigan City facility for EMS, that's going to cost you close to $2 million too. There are other, there are other costs here that we've gone through that have just been increasing and incremental increases. We have, there are many, if we were to go back and take a look at every contract that we have, there have been increases on every one of those service contracts. And they're not going up at 4%. They're going up at 15% roughly. 10 to 15% is what we've been seeing. So, and so everything's been needling away at these increases. And so that's how, you know, and that's where this is all coming to.
I don't disagree that the costs have been going up faster than our levy increases. I think we owe it to the taxpayers though, to be able to explain really precisely where all of this is going to. And, you know, if we're moving it around as a shell game, as it's been called, how do we show exactly what it's being spent on, what new expenditures?
What you'd be looking at is comparing what we spent, you know, the budget from, from '25 to '26. If you, you know, that alone could tell you quite a bit. And so I'm, I'm giving you off the top of my head, which has got a lot of numbers in there of where this is coming from. And I don't know what you're looking for if you want it on a piece of paper. Okay? So if you want it on a piece of paper, then, you know, then that's better that we say that that's what we want. Okay?
The other thing that we need to consider, right, is the fact that we've been pushing this year specifically in driving for a real budget, right? One, work to not to where we're living and dying by additional appropriations coming out of different accounts. And we've got to take a lot of that into consideration. If we're going to drive for a strong general fund budget, we've got to, one, make sure that we pass a real budget, two, work to the real budget. And that also includes working with our funds under Board of Commissioners and the other department heads and elected officials to stay, keep those spending habits in control and find a way to reduce costs overall.
So another question, just budget in general for 2026. We haven't really had a lot of more discussion on it with the wheel tax. So do we, do we look at that number and say, okay, because basically the lowest number is a wash. I mean, what they're asking for that, what we, what we get from the tax would be a wash. We're losing basically from the, from the state, minus $200,000 through the low number.
Right.
Is that something that we want to impose in 2026?
What?
We can only do it for '27 at this point in time, the wheel tax.
Due to.
Too late in the year. Time, time in the year that we were allowed to pass it by.
They had shortened the year for us on '26.
But we could start the process.
Well, I, I think you should really start the process immediately for '27 because the rules are for '27, in order to get certain financing and certain grants, they're kind of really pushing you to put in a wheel tax. And at what level, that's up to you.
Mike, isn't that until 2028?
No, '27.
No, in eight, the grants. No, they're only going to cut back '20, '26 and '27. But '20, '28 is when they're going to go and start imposing the things you're talking about.
I think he's, I think he's right.
I think I am.
I, I think that you have a fiscal year there that you get caught on. So I don't want to dispute it because I don't care. And, you know, I do care that we have enough money to fund things.
So if we're looking at just the bare minimum of the tax, from my numbers and we had the people up here, we're only talking $250,000. And I know it's a lot of money, don't get me wrong. Do we impose a tax because of the 250? Because we're not going to get, you know, you can sell it, we're going to get like Michigan did. Well, they're going to get 1.2 million, but they're really not. Because they're going to lose some of that. So it's not really.
Like you said, it's a wash, right?
It's a shell.
Filling a gap that's already.
Shell game again. But they, but they, but our legislators made sure that we, they, they fit that to us, the shell game we're talking about. So I don't see the numbers yet unless somebody's got, and that's what I'm asking. Can I add, a gentleman was here from, said the same thing.
Right. Mr. Novak.
Real quick question. I know we're almost out of time. But when it comes to the highway, the, the operators, especially the, you know, the ones that, they all have CDLs. Were we, can we, and I know Doug was going to work on something with Wagner Irwin last month. So can we look into creating that separate grid for them? Because, well, we.
Mr. Novak, I thought we did. The problem is, and we've been discussing this for four years now, is the classification. It's not a separate bid, grid.
Well, but here's the problem. The maintenance workers are in the same grid.
I agree. And it's been talked about for four years. We haven't got that.
I know it has. That's why I'm trying to find a solution so that we can move it forward. And I, I'm pretty sure creating maybe a individual, go ahead, Mr. Auditor.
No, I didn't want to stop you from talking. I just wanted to say I'd like to speak on this behalf because he was working on a different project with Wagner Irwin Chile. So what happened is we, knowing that this was going to come up, one of the issues that we have is that the difficulty was on the LTC1 category because they do not have, not everybody has a CDL. So the person who is at the LTC1 without a CDL has to remain at the same level as all the other LTC1s. So we can create a new grid, but that person, there could be two levels of LTC1s, one with and one without. And, you know, I have an email out there with, with Wagner Irwin Chile. I just haven't seen a response and I will have to follow up with a phone call. But that, that was their biggest concern is about, about the LTC1 level. All of the others, there was no problem with because we do have other departments with LTC1s. But, you know.
It's my understanding that maintenance department is at LTC3, correct? And the highway workers with CDLs are at LTC3s. That's what I want to separate.
Yes.
So I understand the issue.
So there would be a new, it would be a new classification, kind of.
That's what I want to fix to the problem. That's all I'm looking for.
No, and so, yeah, that has been, that's something that we've been bantering.
We got one month to get it done.
Mr. Keel.
The other concern I have about this is who's actually shouldering the burden of this increase. Local income tax is only being applied to people who are working and making income and who live in the county. So the people who are not paying for that are businesses, people who are retired, people who.
Retired on social security. Other pensions are taxed.
Good point.
Trust me, I know.
Thank you for this insight. Is this the most fair way to distribute it? Perhaps it would be better to look at doing a general obligation bond for like the portion of the EMS building instead so that it's spread across everybody who's using it. People who also live in the county and make their income in, say, Chicago or something might not be paying local income tax if this isn't their primary residence. So.
Would you have the same argument with the gas tax? I'm, I'm agreeing with you. So, you know, we can, we can look and argue that conversation that we're not getting our fair share.
Wheel tax doesn't cover people driving through.
Absolutely does not. So I know, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you. But then we can go ahead and start picking on a lot of other things, too.
Unfortunately, this is what our state legislators gave us.
Yes.
You know, so far from perfect. So.
Unfortunately, I don't think they'll be the ones to own this increase. I'm sure they'll be like, well, it was your local councilman who voted on this. We didn't force their hand.
Yes.
Don't disagree.
Okay.
May I make one comment?
So when's our next meeting?
I, I'd like to just make one comment because you brought up general obligation bonds. I'm not so sure that we're at the best position to do that yet, even though we have completed our 2024 audits. So we are up to date with our audits. It will be released by the end of, should be released within the next few weeks. And then it'll be public information. I think that they are looking for us to get back on GAAP, which will be the '25 audit, and that will not be done until after May of next year.
What are the prerequisite steps in order for us to get our bond rating reissued?
Oh, we can get a bond rating. The question is, do you want to do it before or after? Okay. And I'd rather do, I'd rather do it when we have.
Everything.
A better report for people to see and, you know, a lot of, a lot of some old issues that may go back for years are all cleaned up. And I'm not, this is not pinning anything on anybody. I just think that the, the GAAP financial statement means a lot more to, to the creditors. Because it's got so much more information in it.
So at the beginning of this general discussion, you mentioned certain dates.
Yes.
Mr. Auditor. So is, would look at their calendar and consider availability next Monday or 10/6 as a preference?
10/6. Think next Monday.
Yeah, originally, we had an issue for next Monday because of the ASC conference, but none of us are going.
So, yeah, 10/6 would be okay if you want, then. 10/6.
I'm hearing 10/6. 10/6 works.
Then I need a second date on 10/10 or 10/14. So you're not giving me a large turnaround, but I will do what we have to.
10/6 is no good.
You have two guys.
29th.
29.
You're talking next Monday?
Yeah. How about 29th? You good?
Yep.
I'll change my mind. Sorry. Yeah, sure. Sure.
5:00.
5:00.
5:00. Let's go for 5.
5.
Mr. Molnar?
What date now?
Next Monday.
A week from tonight.
And that's going to be primarily 100 account discussion.
Okay.
And that way you can finish it all off there. And if there's any more that.
Tweaks we need to do to.
Any, any other tweaks, I'll be fine.
So we'll iron out a.
And we will, we'll have a list together so that way we are going.
We'll have a discussion this week. Okay.
So is that going to put a pressure on, I'm, I'm okay with the 29th. Is that going to put pressure on what Mr. Novak brought up about the highway department then? Because we're going to have to get something a little bit more complicated than that. I know that it sounds easy to just put another grid. We've been fighting this for four years, so it can't be easy, trust me. I'm not saying we, that it's been going through legal status with.
I'll, I'll have, I'll make the phone call in the morning. You know, I have no problem calling.
So this meeting will cover the discussion of setting the date for the hearing for the lit potentially and finishing up the rest of the budget, including 100s and anything that remains.
Mm-hmm. And then we, yeah. Yes, sir. Thank you. It's a good summation. So we're, we're going to be ahead of the game from prior years.
All right.
And we'll have also.
29th at 5.
5.
5. Earlier. All right. So follow on meeting in order to have a hearing. 10th, 14th?
The what?
14th, I'm in Canada.
The next one?
Okay. So you can't.
Did you say the 10th?
How about the 10th?
A Friday?
It's not a Friday. It's supposed to be the Thursday, whatever the Thursday is.
9th.
The 9th.
The Thursday's a 9th?
Can we do the Friday?
No.
I would never have called it on a Friday. I was looking for the Thursday.
Good.
Mondays or Fridays are better.
Play the 13th.
9th's okay if you want to use the 9th. 5:00.
Yep, you're right, 9th.
I'm good on the 9th.
And that stops at that, then we can have a regular meeting and be able to finalize it on the 20th then?
That is correct.
Okay. I got the 9th at 5 if it's okay with everybody else. 9th at 5?
Yep. All good.
2, 3. Mr. Novak?
It's coming Friday.
Mr. Molnar?
Got to take the garbage out that day.
Good for the 9th at 5?
No, not 9th either. Can't make the 9th.
Okay. So we got two out on the 9th.
6 to the 9th.
Other problem is if you're advertising for a.
Public hearing, I need 10 days. So.
Yeah.
And so.
10 days from a Thursday specifically.
So what's, what's, what's your other, what's our?
So we could go the 14th.
Or means the 27th?
So the 14th might be the better date. A Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 14th?
No, your way. So that's no good. Are you waiting that entire week?
We're working on these Columbus.
Depends. Some days I can.
So we can't, the Wednesday would be commissioners' meeting night. So we can do the Thursday. We can do that Thursday.
16th, you said? October 16th?
If that's the Thursday.
Doesn't work for Mike.
Who's?
16, 16.
No, he didn't. It was on 9th. He didn't say 16.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The 16 works for you then.
16.
Okay, sir.
So.
Your right size.
I can make 5. I got an FMEC that ends at 5:00, but we can be here.
Do we, what is the deadline for a lit? Thinking purely logistics here. Why not just make it the same?
31st.
End of October.
Why not make it the same day as our October meeting? Do we need an extra meeting for it?
You have to have a hearing and then vote the next meeting.
There's a 10-day delay.
I don't, I know there's 10 days to do a hearing and then I don't believe there's a delay. But if anybody votes no and we can't, we can't suspend the rules. Because I do believe that you have to have two meetings.
Whenever the date is.
Yeah, it can't be introduced and passed in the same meeting.
I don't think you can do that on a lit.
So instead of the.
I'm not an attorney.
9th and why don't we pick the 16th and a regular?
And I don't know if Mr. DiMartino remembers that from prior year. And then we also, I don't know if you know the rule.
President, I'd like to do this.
We don't want to put you on the spot.
I'm going to get Mike here. I'd like to do the 16th and then a regular meeting on the 28th, 27th.
27th. Yes.
I'd like to do, I'd like to do the 16th. That gives you plenty for public notice. It gives you plenty. So skip the 9th and go to the 16th.
Well, we still need to do the 29th for the 100s. And then we're going to do the 16th and then do the regular meeting.
Yes.
Okay. So we're good with all that.
5:00 on the 16th.
5:00 on the 16th. Yep.
Public hearing.
Public hearing is we the 16th.
All right.[1725.84]